Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Tupelo Council Meeting of March 1st. Before we get started, I'd like to say that Ms. Janet Gaston will not be here, Councilwoman Ms. Gaston. She has some grandmother duties. Janet, will you say hello to everybody?
Hey, everybody.
Okay, she's here on the phone. Number two is if you see me doing this a lot tonight, I ate some candy my wife told me not to eat, and I pulled a cap off, so I'm trying my best to keep the cap on. So with that being said, please stand for the invocation given by Mr. Lynn Bryan and stands, remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance by Ms. Nettie Davis.
Bayheads, our fathers thank thee for their many blessings, keep us from harm, guide us and teach us to be true to each other, ourselves, and thee. Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'll now call this meeting to order and ask our Vice President, Mr. Lynn Bryan, for a confirmation or amendment to the agenda and the agenda order.
Make motion that we confirm the agenda and agenda order with the one addition of citizens' hearings, Mr. Alan Pegues.
Second.
We have a motion by, Mr. Lynn, we have a second by Travis Beard, all in favor? That's unanimous, thank you. We'll now go to the proclamations. I'm sorry, I'm sorry Janet, did I hear you?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. We'll go to the proclamations, recognitions, and reports agenda, beginning with proclamations. Number one, Mayor.
Yes, I will ask Ms. Casey Driss to come up and read the American Red Cross proclamation.
Mayor asked me to read this, and I said that was fine pending the fact that I had glasses, and thankfully I did. So this is American Red Cross Month nationally, so I want to thank y'all for doing this, and I'll read the proclamation now. So whereas in times of crisis, people in Tupelo come together to care for one another, this humanitarian spirit is part of the foundation of our community and is exemplified by American Red Cross volunteers and donors. And whereas, in 1881 Clara Barton founded the American Red Cross, turning her steadfast dedication for helping others into a bold mission of preventing and alleviating people's suffering. Today, more than 140 years later, we honor the kindness and generosity of Red Cross volunteers here in Tupelo to continue to carry out Clara's life-saving legacy. They join the millions of people across the United States who volunteer, give blood, donate financially, or learn vital life-saving, life-preserving skills through the Red Cross. And whereas in Tupelo, the contributions of local Red Cross volunteers give hope to the most vulnerable in their darkest hours, whether it's providing emergency shelter, food, and comfort for families devastated by local disasters like home fires, tornadoes, hurricanes, or flooding, supporting service members and veterans along with their families and caregivers through the unique challenges of military life, helping to save the lives of others with first aid, CPR, and other skills, or delivering international humanitarian aid. And whereas during the last year alone, more than 20 North Mississippi volunteers deployed to assist with the record number of disasters across the southeast. Volunteers also helped 56 people affected by home fires in Tupelo and another 15 impacted by tornadoes by addressing their urgent needs like food, lodging, recovery support. And whereas, their work to prevent and alleviate human suffering is vital to strengthening our community's resilience. We dedicate this month of March to all those who continue to advance the noble legacy of American Red Cross founder Clara Barton, who lived by her words, "You must never think of anything except the need and how to meet it." We ask others to join in this commitment to give back in our community.
Now therefore, I, Todd Jordan, Mayor of Tupelo, by virtue of authority vested in me by the laws of Tupelo and the state of Mississippi, do hereby proclaim March 2022 as American Red Cross Month.
I just also wanted to thank you all for your financial support as a city. I've learned since I've been with Red Cross that Mississippi is unique in that we are one of the few states that allows municipalities and counties to contribute to Red Cross. And so I'm very thankful for your continued support, we really appreciate it, and I promise you it's going to good work. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, the Red Cross is certainly appreciated. We'll now go to recognition of girl and boy scouts, I do not see any girl or boy scouts here tonight. We'll go to the next item, which is employee recognitions. Mayor.
Yes, and the matter of commendation and chief's award.
This time I'd like Officer Bearman, Officer Bynum, and Mr. Atchison to join me at the podium, please. As I told the City Council before, I really like the opportunity to show off what our officers do when it comes to just outstanding events, and tonight I get to do that. And I also get to award the first ever chief's award. This is something we talked about three or four weeks ago, and sure enough, within a couple of days, we had someone that was very worthy of the award. So let me read to you what was given to me. On February 11th of this year, approximately 8:00 a.m., officers of the Tupelo Police Department were dispatched to the area of Interstate 22 in North Gloucester in reference to a male threatening to jump from the bridge. Officer Bynum and Officer Bearman arrived on scene and began attempting to locate the male. Officer Bynum was on the eastbound lane and noticed the male wearing a red shirt hanging off the ledge of the westbound bridge. The eastbound bridge was separated from the westbound side by a large drop-off. Officer Bynum radioed Officer Bearman the location of the male. Officer Bynum then began to communicate with the male and distract him until Officer Bearman could get to his location. Officer Bearman was able to approach from behind the male and safely pull him from the ledge of the bridge. The male became combative with Officer Bearman and refused to listen to his commands. The struggle ensued, and Officer Bearman ultimately had to deploy his taser, which had no effect on the male. As Officer Bearman continued attempting to place the male in custody, and the male continued to resist. A passerby, Mr. Atchison, bravely exited his vehicle and asked Officer Bearman if he needed assistance. Officer Bearman said yes, and Mr. Atchison began to assist. With the assistance of Mr. Atchison, Officer Bearman was able to gain control of the male and was handcuffed. It is without a doubt that the quick actions of these two officers and Mr. Atchison helped save the life of this male. It was learned that this male was suffering from mental issues in the past several days. It is my pleasure to give these three gentlemen commendation awards.
At this time, we'll go to public recognitions, I'll begin with Ms. Nettie Davis.
I would like for us to be in prayer for the family of Bobby Stubbs who passed away a few days ago, and he was a member of Tupelo Police Department for more than 20 years, and I'd like for us to be in prayer for Bobby Stubbs' family. I think he would be funeralized Saturday in Tupelo.
Thank you, Ms. Nettie. Travis?
Mr. President, just remind the community to support the Empty Bowls Luncheon tomorrow at the Tupelo Furniture Market from 11 till 1:00, if you get a chance to come by and support their efforts.
Thank you Travis, Lynn?
No.
Janet? Janet, do you have any public recognitions?
Yes, I do. I would like to congratulate the Tupelo Shockwave Aquatic Swim Team for hosting a successful state swim meet last weekend, and I think there are close to 300 swimmers there, which is quite a job to take on, and it takes a lot of volunteers and parents from the swim team to make that successful. And I'd like to congratulate the new coach, his name is Cam Brando.
Thank you very much Janet, thank you so much. Yes, if you want to know how the aquatic club is doing in the Aquatic Center, just drive out there on the weekend and look, it's amazing. I mean, it is total congestion, so they're doing very well. At this time, we'll go to the Mayor's remarks, Mayor.
Well, I just want to mention, we did have a big sports weekend last weekend, a little bit of that was rained out on Saturday. We have another big sports weekend this weekend, so we just ask our citizens to be a little patient at the restaurants as we go through this time, which is a great time for the city of Tupelo. And again, Chief Lockton and the officers and Mr. Atchison, I want to say thank you to all of them.
Thank you, Mayor, appreciate that. We'll now close the regular meeting, open the public agenda, we'll go to public hearings, which we do not have any, we do not have any appeals, we do have two citizens' hearing, we have two citizens' hearings, beginning with Ms. Sheila Sanders. Are you here, Ms. Sanders? Yes ma'am, if you would, come forward, give us your name and address, and you'll have five minutes to speak.
Hello, my name is Sheila Sanders, my address is 2512 South Gloucester Street, and I'm here because my grass was cut by the city, and I didn't have proper notice. I usually always get my mail, I have someone always check to make sure if I'm definitely going to get any mail from the city, I need to know right away. Well, I don't know, all of a sudden, my mail wasn't sent to my proper address any longer. It had been sent to an address that I haven't really had in 17 years, and I didn't notice that until I asked the lady, Jennifer, I think that was her name, to give me a copy of the letter that they had sent me, and that's when I noticed that that address was on there. I received a lot of mail from the city at my regular address, and I didn't have proof of that. People liked to see it, and I had to go back and look for a lot of stuff, because I used to try to keep all of my mail that I get from anywhere, and I do have some packed up a little everywhere over the years, but I was able to pull out some of them to show that I did receive information from the city at my proper address, which is 2512 South Gloucester Street.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Later, if you'd like, or even this afternoon, you can get in touch with Tanner Newman, our Development Services man, and discuss that with him, and he'll be glad to answer any questions.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. We have another, we have a gentleman now that would like to speak, Mr. Alan Pegues.
I do, I do, President Palmer, thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Alan Pegues, we're Premium Productions here in Tupelo, located at 398 East Main Street. I just want to thank you, the City Council, for allowing me to come before you this evening, and I appreciate this opportunity. I come before you as your local media company who has been providing our services, which has included marketing videos, photography, special projects, recording the monthly planning committee meeting, as well as recording and broadcasting these Tupelo City Council meetings live each and every month since 2005. Premium Productions is a family-owned business operated by myself, my son, my daughter, and our part-time employees. We take this job very seriously, I mean very seriously. And we strive to provide the best quality service to you each month. For example, most recently, we spent over $400 of our own capital to upgrade our software and our equipment in order to give you and the citizens of Tupelo a new and improved City Council presentation for the entire month of January, don't know if you noticed it.
I did.
Okay, good deal. So what that included was a new opening, a second camera angle, HD graphics, and we did that off of an additional charge, okay? As leaders in this community, and some of you are business owners, I'm sure you can understand the fact that you can provide better service to your client if you know you have a contractual agreement with them for two or three years at a time compared to a month-to-month type of situation. And I'm here tonight to request that you, the City Council, work with the Mayor's office to provide Premium Productions with at least a two-year agreement so we can continue to provide the best media service that we can to the city of Tupelo, to its citizens, and to this council. We are currently operating under a six-month contract, which expires very soon. That is very unsettling to myself and to any business owner, let alone a parent that has a kid at Mississippi State right now, and another one on her way to college in two years. If there is any areas that you would like for us to improve or change, please let me know. I look forward to the opportunity to continue to work, to continue this work relationship with the city of Tupelo, and I just appreciate you all for allowing me this opportunity to come before you and speak. Thank you. Anyone have any questions for me?
When did this contract, that you say you have a six-month contract now?
Yes, ma'am.
When did this begin?
It started August of last year.
August of last year?
Yes, ma'am.
I guess I want to weigh up this, but I know ever since I've been on the council with the exception of maybe one or two years, that was you and another young man worked for Comcast.
Right.
And I think Comcast has a public service where they will allow you to put it on Comcast without any charge, is that true?
Yes, ma'am.
So I was just concerned about why there wasn't anything discussed as to why it was changed to six months.
That's what the option I was given, I requested a two-year agreement, but I was given only a six-month agreement.
You've been with the city of Tupelo since 2005?
I started as a Comcast employee in 2005, and once we split ways and I started my own company, Comcast approached me and asked me would I continue to provide services.
So what hap, I don't think it's airing anymore. I don't think that the council is airing anymore on Comcast.
It is not.
So if, did you say no charge?
Right.
So if there's no charge, then what happened?
I was told to discontinue the Comcast broadcast.
So Comcast wanted to discontinue, or they didn't want, no longer want to do it free?
No, this City Hall wanted to discontinue.
Thank you Alan, I appreciate it, thank you so much. We'll now go to the routine agenda. Item number four, in the matter of minutes of February 15th.
May I approve the minute?
Second.
I have a motion by Travis Beard, a second by Lynn Bryan, all in favor? That is unanimous, thank you. Janet? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Janet?
Yeah.
Thank you, ma'am. In the matter of bill pay.
I move that we would pay the bills.
Second.
I have a motion by Nettie Davis, a second by Travis Beard. Tonight, the bills were paid by Travis Beard. Ms. Nettie Davis, myself, under the watchful of Jennifer Schippert and Johnny Timmons, we have a motion, second, all in favor of paying the bills. That's unanimous, thank you Janet, that's unanimous. In the matter, item six, in the matter of advertising and promotional items, we do not have any on that, so we'll go to item number seven, in the matter of continuing disclosure for fiscal year 2021.
Somebody.
Second. We have a motion by Chad Mills, a second by Ms. Rosie, Kim Hannah?
She's not here, Ben is here, Dan.
Ben?
This is an annual requirement that we use, utilize our bond council to get all the information together and send it to the Electronic Municipal Market Access, or EMA, which is a, it's a source of information about municipal bonds and securities across the United States, and it's regulated by the SEC and the, it's an annual requirement so that everybody knows, can look, the public in other states and municipalities can look and see what information's out there on our bonding, and we ask that we allow Butler Snow to again prepare this for us.
Thank you, Ben, any questions? We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Yeah.
Thank you, that's unanimous. Item number eight, in the matter of appointment of John Ray to the Police Advisory Board.
Somebody.
Second.
We have a motion by Lynn Bryan, a second by Ms. Nettie Davis. Mayor?
Yes, this is a recommendation from Councilman Mill. Just go ahead and introduce.
Yeah, so he was, John Paul was able to, he rushed back from Starkville to join us tonight for, I want him to, he can stand up, he's in the back of the room there, so anyone wants to see him or ask him any questions. But just to tell a little brief about John Paul, he's a senior vice president with Community Bank in Tupelo, he's from Carthage, graduated from Mississippi State with a Bachelor of Science, married Mary Stuart Ray, have two children, Mitchell and Liza, Jane, which we know real well because they are neighbors. Active in his community, served on Lee County MSU Alumni Board, parking rec board for baseball, take a swing at cancer, and is currently a member of the AEE Board and Quanis Club. He and his family are active members of First United Methodist Church where his wife, Mary Stuart, works as well. And he's been a citizen for 17 years in Tupelo and has a passion for the city and our school district, and I think he would be a great asset to the board, so I ask that you vote to approve that.
Any other comments, Council? We appreciate your willingness to do this. We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Yeah.
That's unanimous, thank you. We'll now go to item number nine, in the matter of approval to request activation of the M.T.A. Program Project.
I move that we would approve this request.
Second.
We have a motion by Nettie Davis, a second by Ms. Lynn Bryan, Mr. Lynn Bryan, so Ms. Abby?
Good evening. We were awarded in early February, the city of Tupelo was awarded two grants that we applied for in the fall. We were awarded a MDOT Transportation Alternative Grant, one for Ward 4, one for Ward 7. These projects are, require an activation request to continue on to the next phase. This is a requirement of the MDOT, it is a simple letter, but it requires your approval to request this activation for these two grants, so I'm here tonight to just ask that of you tonight.
Any questions that you'd like to ask?
I would just like to mention that the sidewalks in Ward 4 will be located up near the apartments behind Academy Sports all the way down to Bunn Cars Cross the Road. This is something I have hoped for a long time, and it actually happened under the leadership of our mayor, Todd Jordan, and I think this would be very helpful to those citizens living in that area because they will be more walkable and they will be able to walk to some of the areas, the shopping areas down, and up on the north end of Tupelo.
Very good, thank you, Ms. Nettie, any other comments?
And hopefully it'll cut down on some of the traffic up there on the north end. I also want to say thank you for searching for the grant, to be able to put a sidewalk from Lonnell School to some of the apartments and some of the homes in my area, so it'll be a safe avenue for the kids to get to school, and hopefully it'll cut down on some of the danger with them being there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rosie. We have a motion, a second, all in favor? That's unanimous?
Yeah.
And she, yeah, you might as well stay, I think. Number 10, in the matter of approval to request activation of the M.T.A. Program Project Ward 7.
Somebody. Second.
We have a motion by Lynn Bryan, a second by Travis Beard. Ms. Abby?
This is similar, or exactly the same as the one prior, this is another grant awarded by MDOT, the Transportation Alternative Program as well, awarded at the beginning of February, so this also requires a separate letter than the first, but very similar, an activation request with your approval.
So do we have any comments on that? Hoorays and hallelujahs?
It's just great, and the more sidewalks the more we can encourage our citizens to walk and exercise more.
Any other comments, Rosie?
No, we have to shut it down.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Yeah.
Unanimous, thank you very much, Abby, thank you. Item number 10, 11, in the matter of a resolution declaring that certain drainage improvements in the vicinity of Mossy Oak Drive are necessary for the health, comfort, and convenience of the municipality and authorizing compensation for the acquisition of a temporary construction and permit maintenance easement.
Somebody. Second.
We have a motion by Travis Beard, a second by Chad Mills. Mr. Stephen, ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Stephen Reed.
Thank you, President Palmer. This relates to a drainage project that we've had in the works for nearly a year now in the vicinity of Big Oak Subdivision. So for us to be able to move forward on that drainage project, we'll need to acquire a drainage easement to the southeast of the area, and we'll also be, we'll need to pay compensation, any amount of $5,000 to acquire that easement.
Any comments, questions? We have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Yeah.
That's unanimous, thank you, Stephen. Item number 12, in the matter of surfacing weapon for retirement.
Make a motion, we approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Lynn Bryan, a second by Ms. Rosie? Okay, Chief?
Yes, thank you, President. Yes, on Friday of last week, Captain Tim Bell retired from the Tupelo District Police Department, and it is our longstanding policy, and it's allowed by the state of Mississippi in statute that when an officer retires, he's allowed to purchase his sidearm for $1. And in order to do this, I am asking that you allow us to surplus that sidearm, it is a Glock 9 millimeter.
Very good, any questions, comments? We have a motion, a second, on the floor, all in favor?
Yeah.
That is unanimous, thank you, Chief. Item number 13, in the matter of land purchase for a right-of-way.
May I approve the land purchase?
Second.
We have a motion by Travis Beard, a motion and a second by Ms. Nettie Davis. Dennis?
Yes, sir, good evening. This is in reference to a piece of property out on Southeastern Boulevard between Veterans and Briar Ridge, and I've attached a newspaper article from the Daily Journal that ran on February 16th, this comes as a recommendation from Metro Thoroughfare for the approval to purchase this property. If we purchase- Third Affair for the approval to purchase this property. If we purchase this property, you know, agreement with Black Hill Baptist Church, that will allow us to get started, advertise our project, get started out there.
Thank you, Dennis. Any comments? I am tickled to death and ready for y'all to get cranked up. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Yes.
That's unanimous. Thank you, Dennis. Item number 14, in the matter of planning committee minutes of February 7th.
Move that we approve the planning committee minute.
Second.
We have a motion by Travis Beard. We have a second by Lynn Bryan. All in favor?
Yes.
That's unanimous. Tanner, I'm sorry.
I was gonna note that these are the February 7th planning committee minutes. In those minutes, you will see the committee deny a request from Butler Park to resolve approximately 55 acres from MDR Residential Zone to agriculture open. We've not received an appeal from the developer, and we continue to work with the developer to try to find an alternative solution for that problem.
I apologize. I got a little ahead of myself. I was worried about my tooth.
Trying to go too fast.
What?
Trying to go too fast.
Okay, I'll slow down. Hold on. Okay. Item number 15, in the matter of bid for Ballard Park Baseball Fourplex Common Area Bid 2022-004 PR.
Move that we accept the bid for Ballard Park Baseball.
Second.
We have a motion by Travis Beard, a second by Ms. Nettie. Mr. Alex?
We opened bids last week for this project, Ballard Park Fourplex. The base bid was a pavilion with sidewalks, some sod and dirtwork, along with an add-alternate of batting cages. And M&amp;M Construction came in as the, as the apparent bidder with a base bid of $139,987 and the add-alternate for $74,019. For both combined, for $214,006. And so tonight, I just ask that for y'all's approval on both the base bid and the add-alternate. And this is within our budget.
Any comments, questions? We do have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Yes.
That's unanimous. Thank you, Alex. We'll now go to item number 16, in the matter of CVB Minutes of February 23rd, 2022.
Some move.
Second.
We have a motion by Chad Mills, a second by Ms. Rosie. All in favor?
Yes.
That's unanimous. Thank you. We'll go to item number 17, in the matter of a bid award 2022-008 WL Sale of Surplus Property.
I move that we would approve the bid.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Nettie, a second by Mr. Travis. Mr. Johnny Timmons?
Yes, Council, you probably remember months ago that you surplused a 1986 Commander 260 series digger deck for us. We recently sealed bid that unit, and I recommend to you to, JJ Merchant, for the price of $5,277.
Any questions? We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Yes.
Thank you, Johnny. Item number 18, in the matter of bid award 2022-003 WL 12-inch ductile iron pipe.
Move that we approve the bid for the ductile iron pipe.
Second.
We have a motion by Travis Beard, a second by Ms. Rosie. JT?
Yes, this pipe is going to be used on West Jackson Street, basically from Lumpkin Street to Thomas Street, which is about 3,000 square feet. I would recommend you tonight to the low bid of consolidate pipe supply for $135,660.
Any comments, questions? We have a bid, I mean, a motion?
Johnny, I thought you said that there was two, there was two different types of pipe, and there's two different suppliers on there. Was that?
That's an excellent, that's an excellent.
Okay, okay, okay. It's coming up next. I got you. Okay.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Yes.
That's unanimous. Thank you, Johnny. I will now go to item number 19. This was in the matter of bid award number 2022-006 WL LED roadway lighting fixtures and poles, McCullough Boulevard.
I move that we would award the bid.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Nettie. We have a second by Lynn. Mr. Johnny Timmons?
Yes, as you know, we are in the process of LED in the whole city of Tupelo. Our next big project coming up is going to be the LED McCullough Boulevard. Years and years ago, the Department of Transportation actually lit that roadway. And as you've probably seen many times, a lot of pole clutter out there. So we've decided to come in, and we're going to put decorative poles in the median and decorative poles up the off-ramps and put them in LEDs.
Comments?
Did you mention something about they will go all the way to Front Street?
Sure, yes, ma'am. Basically, it's going to start at Mount Vernon, and then it will go around to the off-ramp to Front Street. And I would recommend the low bid of $320,482.55 to Stewart C.R.B. Company.
I think it's excellent. That's going to be a real plus for our entrances into the city. Something that has been needed for a while. And the LED lighting is going to be super when you get all of that done.
It's going to look good. Again, our labor forces, the water light will be the ones putting it in.
What about the exit in of the city? Like out by the building area, getting on to the bypass there? Are y'all, is that anywhere in the near future?
Well, I hope so. We're talking part of the transportation, which has their jurisdiction.
Okay.
You know, they put high-mass lighting up at I-22 and 45. We would appreciate if they could do that also.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Any more questions, comments?
I think I have a request, Johnny, to consider putting better lighting going from Green Street all the way up to the Mall for those who have trouble seeing at night. These kind of dogs going across, do you think that would ever happen?
Yes, ma'am. We're working with Tom Digby. You know, we just got through doing Havenaker through Tom Digby, so that will be, that will be a process. We're going to go into that.
I can attest that Tom Digby will definitely work with the city. They're a good group. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Yes.
That's unanimous. Thank you. Item number 20, in the matter of bid award 2022-007 WL Water Materials, Six-Month Supply Bid.
Move that we approve the bid.
Second.
We have a motion by Travis Beard, a second by Mr. Lynn Bryan. Johnny?
Yes. This is, again, this is a bid we take every six months for all of the water materials that we use in the water light park. There's actually 113 items in this bid. The low bidders were consolidated pipe, southern pipe, GNC supply. The answer is three.
Any questions, comments? We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Yes.
That's unanimous. We have no items on the study agenda. At this time, I would entertain a motion for a, recently going to executive session.
Make a motion to determine the need to go in executive session.
Second.
We have a motion by Lynn Bryan, a second by Ms. Rosie. All in favor?
Yes.
I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session.
I move that we go to executive session.
We don't know what the need is yet.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Thank you, Vice President. A bonus for him. Go ahead, Tanner. Come in.
President Palmer, we have two or three, well, we have a acceptance of a donation right-of-way on South Green that we'll need to discuss. Exchange of property on Talbot Street that's different than what we discussed at our last meeting, and the sale of city property on McCullough Boulevard, or potential sale. And then the resolution of potential litigation, all of which are either real property or litigation, and that would be proper matters for executive session.
Make a motion to go in executive session.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to go in executive session. All in favor?
Yes.
That's unanimous. We appreciate y'all coming out tonight. We've enjoyed it. We hope y'all have.